...Board Member Trutain.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move down to this table and conduct the meeting from there.
It was interesting.
I know, I think one is not working, so we'll...
He's working on it.
Yes, we'll make do with this one.
Good.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and get started. Today, our principals are presenting and staff are presenting elementary single plans for student achievement for the 2018-19 school year. I'm pleased to welcome Melissa Poole, Principal of Marin Elementary; Heather Duncan, Principal of Cornell; Rebecca Eros, one of our teachers on special assignment. She is located at Ocean View but here, I think representing the TSA voice in general, I hope. Terry Georgson, the Principal of Ocean View. And also welcome Rebecca Springer, teacher from Ocean View who was able to join us last year. So we have three questions to guide our conversation. And because the work at the elementary level often occurs in such sync, we're going to take each question at a time and talk across sites around those questions rather than deal just with one site at a time. That way, I think also we will ensure that everybody gets equal voice time. So our three questions relative to our single plans: how well did we do implementing this year's plan? How do we know if we were successful? And how has that knowledge influenced plans for next year? So Heather Duncan, Principal of Cornell, is going to start us off by sharing for just a few moments how well we did implementing this year's plan. And I will help us to try to keep time. We have about 90 minutes, so about 30 minutes or so on each question, just in the interest of time. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, this year, I think, you know, I'm sure you've had a chance to look at the plan, and I'm going to talk just briefly about three areas that were somewhat of a focus for us. But I think before I do, I just want to give some accolades and acknowledgement to the fact that we've continued implementing the units of study writing and have gone through an entire pilot and adoption process for reading. And I think that has colored a lot of the academic work at the site, although I don't comment on it so much in my executive summary, but I just want to give acknowledgement to that. You know, the three things that we were really working on this year, two of which you might recall we've been focusing on a bit over the last two to three years, are academic intervention and English language development. You know, we've been trying to work away from, for those of you that have been here for a bit, a climate where we had sort of clustered the kids that were needing the most support, not our newcomers, but the bulk of the kids being intermediates. And we've been moving away from that. And I really feel super pleased about the work that we've done. And when we get to successes, I'll be able to talk more about that. Additionally, we've been trying to serve more students in math, and that is something that I've been talking about the last couple of years. And this is the second year in a row we were able to provide math intervention during the school day. And this year, we were able to serve all six grades, which was up from three last year. So with a combo of in and outside of the school day, I'm really happy about the way that we're serving our academic kids with intervention. And I highlight math, but again, when I talk about safety or successes, I think you'll hear about how all of the intervention is being woven together. And then lastly, we've been working, as you probably know, at all the sites on a climate of safety and kindness and doing a number of both explicit and indirect things to try to shape the culture at our campuses and work on supporting teachers as they start integrating this as more of a direct piece of instruction with social learning, social-emotional learning standards. And we're just starting to kind of get into that social justice competency component. So in terms of how well we did, I'm very pleased, and I can't wait to talk about more. But I'm going to pass it on. Are we all going to share and then have questions? Okay. And which direction?
Sure. Next, Debbie. Great. Yeah, so I'm super pleased to be here tonight to represent Marin. And, yeah, similar to Heather, we measured mathematics, reading, and our climate as places that we wanted to focus on. Really proud of my intervention team. They do a really great job in focusing on ELA needs. They work together to serve the need, not along with our resource specialist, Sarah Haller, who is part-time, who works 80 percent special ed and 20 percent intervention. Next year, she's changing that position to 100 percent special ed. Our population at Marin changed a little bit this year, so we're excited that she's going to be focusing on special ed. And we are going to be hiring a point two, or we did hire a point two math intervention person. So I feel like we've done a great job this year of looking at what's working and tweaking the system that we've had in place for a long time. And we're looking forward to making some changes. Just like Heather said, we focused on school climate in terms of our No Place For Hate initiative, and I'm really proud of the work that's been done there. We were required to do three, you know, focus projects. And at Marin, I feel like we did so much more, you know, explicit and conversations, so many more conversations with our leadership teams, parents, with teachers, and I'm really proud of the work that's been done there this year.
All right. I brought two of the folks who worked either really hard on some components of our achievements this year. So I'm just going to kind of introduce it, and I'm going to have Rebecca Eros kind of talk about staff development and teacher support. And then Rebecca Springer does particularly a lot of work with us around school culture. So I'm going to give them the opportunity to talk about that. So I'm going to start with Rebecca.
Exactly. And I'm kind of talking about what we did onsite, but a lot of what's happened with staff development has really been in conjunction with my two TSA colleagues at Cornell and Marin. And we've really done a lot with trying to kind of coordinate staff development, both in terms of district-wide, single-site professional development opportunities on our professional development days, on our lab sites, with our consultant, Marika Pious Wilson. And then things we're doing onsite, kind of in common throughout. And one of the things that we've really tried to do and focused on in utilizing best practices for students is kind of keeping a focus and keeping a lot of our discussions and our decisions grounded in student work. And a lot of that has been through the new writing curriculum that we adopted two years ago. And I think it's really going well, both in terms of kind of coherence to the new curriculum district-wide and with the results that we're seeing in our students. And I'm sure when you guys have had your discussions, they've been really similar to ours, looking at student work in staff meetings and saying, oh, my gosh, I never realized that first graders could write this much, or this well, or this articulately. And it's really generated a lot of enthusiasm for, you know, for really digging into the work. Because what we've chosen as a district for writing and the coming reading is definitely not the easiest curriculum to implement. But what it empowers kids to do is phenomenal. And so a lot of our staff work has really been looking at that and looking what our students are doing and celebrating where they're going, what they've done, and usually and really targeting what they need next. And the work we've done kind of staff-wide has been, how do we talk about student work? And how do we kind of plan those next steps? And so we're doing work in grade-level teams, kind of, and then in various larger contexts to really help build teacher capacity and just kind of keep going. I'm really excited for the next year when we're adding the reading component into it. It's a big shift in practice where, you know, we've been paying a lot of attention to the materials that we're getting and organizing and thinking now about how we're going to support teachers in making this shift. We've got a series of lab sites planned and kind of various scales of teacher development. So that's the big thing. And then supporting teachers in lots of other individualized ways that may be less curriculum-specific. We've done some work with teacher coaching and kind of how to really help people focus on an area of practice and be reflective. And it's been really exciting to see teachers happy with the way things are going in their classrooms.
Thank you for inviting me back. One of the comments at the end of last year was that some of the board members had said that they appreciated hearing a teacher's perspective. So I'm going to go ahead and start with that. One of the most exciting things about this year has been the cross-sharing amongst the three schools. Going to the Museum of Tolerance is one of the most important, significant things that have happened to me in a very, very long time, not just because it was so impactful of my thinking and teaching, but because of the colleagues from other schools and my own school that I got to know more deeply. And I really, really appreciate that opportunity. I also want to talk about the fluidity of our services. Our EL teachers and our ELD teachers and our reading specialists are so intersected that I can't sometimes tell who's doing what. They work truly as a team with a net, and that's the, and they bend and change the groups and structure, weekly if necessary, to serve kids. And I am thinking the same way as Heather is about, instead of trying to predetermine how the kids are thinking and learning and putting them into groups and setting them up, we are instead taking them where they're at and adjusting our thinking and our teaching. And I find that so empowering. We're doing the same thing in math. Right now, this is the first year we were successfully able to implement push-in support for first through fifth grade. We're using a single teacher. And what's so powerful, or instructor, what's so powerful about that is, again, what Rebecca Eros was talking about, about seeing where kids begin and where they need to end and really understanding that flow. We are using that teacher in a great deal to work with Mars Task, because then you're doing academic vocabulary, talking about mathematical learning and articulating, not just working with numbers. And being taught that consistently, using S V M I-proven standards has really, I think, will be reflected in our test scores this year, but it certainly is in the conversations I have with students in the classroom. So in my opinion, this has been a big year for A U S D, for working as a team, which is really important considering what's coming up for us over the next couple of years. So I'm thrilled about that. I do want to spend a minute talking about social justice and leadership, because that has been a huge part, just not just in our district, of what we've been learning about ourselves at all different school levels and what we need to know, what, how we need to adapt and support our kids has been really powerful. Our school site was lucky enough to be able to join the Alameda County Social Justice and Math Project, or Class, workshop that went on all year, which was incredibly eye-opening for me, really helped me reflect on my mathematical teaching. When you're not changing your math curriculum and you're not digging in and learning something new and reprioritizing, sometimes you can kind of get in a bit of a slump on the way you're doing what you're doing. And so that's really helped me rejuvenate. We were able to bring that to staff and, again, have some shared learning together to help us be more reactive and more understanding and thoughtful about our math instruction. And I think we will continue, already seen some benefits and will continue to see some this year. So I'm feeling very successful. We also at Ocean View significantly expanded our leadership program. And in doing that, we've been trying to empower our students. Also, with the No Place For Hate campaign, this really gave us a goal to up what we've been doing. And I feel really good. I don't feel nearly as tired as you think I would be three days before school, just getting out. And I just, I feel like it's because we've been working together and sharing it, and I'm really proud.
Let me just add a little detail to a couple of things that the both of them have mentioned. Some of the areas that Rebecca was talking about around staff development and supporting of teachers, some of the ways in which continuity and fluidity works at a site when a TSA is available like that is when you're noticing that students and/or certain teachers, particularly new teachers, need additional supports. You have that coach that can come in and help keep that group on pace and make sure that that teacher has materials and take extra time with them. So at a school like Ocean View, where from one year to another, either through growth or through change, new teachers are a part of my climate regularly. And I think from time to time, I hear from the other two schools that they have periods of time where they have new teachers come in, and it really does impact the culture of your instruction. So the kind of support that is being able to be offered, one through TSA and two because our, as you mentioned over here, is our ELD and reading support folks. At Ocean View, as well as the other two schools, but to a higher degree for us, our ELD population runs on average at about 30 to 40 percent of our school. And that is from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, they're coming and leaving throughout the year. So it could be a week before testing and we've got new kids in the school. So those are the things that require a lot of flexibility from a staff. And the continuity of FTE, the continuity of staff, and the ability to support new staff are really some of the successes, whether they're written explicitly in here or between the lines, are real important, which is why I'm really thankful, because I only invited these guys this afternoon, that they were able to be here, because I think they're able to really share with you much better in detail than I am.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to add something that with our TSA's, it's not only that you're in classrooms and you're providing support, but I observe the tremendous amount of planning that you do. I've been to cross-site meetings, I've seen you with Marie doing a lot of planning, and that takes a lot of teamwork, a lot of dedication. But what I heard last year from a teacher who went back into the classroom after being a TSA, found that her instructional practice was so much more enriched because of the work that she was doing as a TSA. And I just kind of want to make that known, that the work that the three TSA's are doing in terms of planning is phenomenal, because that really is that kind of what you're talking about, the collaboration and that shared leadership.
So now we're going to take some time for questions and comments, and we only have one mic, so we will do our best to get it around the table.
You had a whole bunch of yellow. Do you want to start?
Okay. Okay. So I'm not sure exactly where in the program is the right time for which kind of question I'm just going to go ahead and ask. And it's not really so much a question, it's kind of more, I'm interested in your reflections, perhaps, on issues around social-emotional competency, student behavior. Anecdotally, I feel like since, you know, kindergarten for us was 1991 for the first year, and there's been some real changes. And I hear that from teachers also, veteran teachers, that, you know, the student population is just a different population than it was 20 years ago. And yet, we don't really have any ability to provide the kind of staffing you would need, I think, to respond to those changes over time. And we've got a classroom teacher, right? Be nice if we had, you know, a corresponding social-emotional competency teacher for every classroom. We don't. I don't know. Does this, does this pattern, though, seem like something you've seen? Do you feel like these are increasing needs over time? I don't know what we do about them.
Sure. I'd be happy to start on that. So I'm also giving my board spotlight tonight, so I'll try to summarize. It's on social-emotional learning and social justice. And I definitely would agree that in the 20 years that I've been an educator, I've seen significant shifts. And I think one piece of that is students' access to technology has changed dramatically in the last 20 years. You know, anxiety has gone up. I, is, you know, so, yeah, technology, anxiety, and I feel like ADHD is becoming more and more recognized. Perhaps it's always existed, but at least, but now we're calling it what it is and dealing with it. In terms of our ability to support these changes, sure, we would love more. We would absolutely love more support. And I do appreciate the question, Charlie. And at the same time, I do have to acknowledge our teachers are working really hard to change with the times and are really willing to lean in to some hard conversations about how to support kids. At Marin, we've taken a look at our SST procedures and spent a lot of time thinking about why we do what we do this year and what special ed is and who that should serve and what's a general ed function. And lots of thoughtful conversations around that that I think have, you know, moved us in the right direction to support, you know, our changing needs. But, yeah, it's changed. I don't want to take up all the time for that.
I think I might say the opposite, just for fun, because I have some varying opinions about this. I actually think, in my 25 years in education, I feel blessed that I've been able to work on a variety of places and demographics and backgrounds. And I actually don't think it has changed that much. I mean, I agree with Melissa that we have more access to technology. Certainly, we're evolving, right? But I read a wonderful quote last night that I cannot get off my mind in a professional book that basically said, "We've continually been reforming schools for over 15 years and nothing has changed." And I'm telling you, that made me sit up in bed and put the book down and think about, what does that mean? Because it feels like an insult when I'm progressive and I have this great staff and all these things are going on. But the more and more that I've been thinking about it today, it really connects with your question, Charlie, that I actually think the kids have not changed much. I will say this, demographic may change in the place that you're at, which forces us to reconsider some of our approaches. But given my range of work, I feel like I've been able to see a lot of different groups. And so I think these kids remind me of kids I had in my class my very first year. These teachers are just as wonderful as those teachers were. Their parents have the similar makeup and needs. But I do think, one of my reflections from thinking about that, and I've been thinking about it again all day, is that our awareness, at least I can speak for myself and where I'm at currently, my awareness of what makes teaching and learning and a community come together to take care of people's needs, the whole child, is absolutely leagues beyond where I was as a brand-new teacher. And that could be because I was young or I was brought up in a different background. But I'm so fortunate that I think we're becoming more aware of what the needs are. And like Melissa mentioned, kids having ADHD, I actually don't think there's more kids with it. I just think it's been, you know, without getting too much into medical diagnoses, I think we're getting more aware of the fact that these things were going on before, but we weren't taking care of it and we weren't considering it our duty, right? It was sort of an outlier. And now I see this acknowledgement and then huge question marks, a line of question marks that come after that, you know, and guilt and worry. But it's wonderful, right? At least that's my answer, you know?
I don't know. I think I feel a little bit in the middle. I think technology has a bigger impact than we acknowledge. And I think technology is a babysitter for a lot of families. I also think we live in an age of a lot of anger right now, particularly in the last couple of years since the last election. And with the socioeconomic pressures on our families, I've seen kind of a tipping point in the last couple of years. I think there's a reason the population at my school has dropped a little bit. And I think it is reflective of the cost of housing, as well as some of the cost of housing changes in the village. I have more kids who come to school upset, angry, dysregulated. Not to say that that hasn't always been there, but I have more of them. And some of the resources that I've pulled together this year and want to plan better for next year is our counselors. I read, I was listening to a program on the radio of a middle school in San Francisco that used the counselors to do kind of like some triage. And I attempted that this year, where I would have a counselor on call each day, and they would have to drop whatever they were doing, so there was always a negative to it. But if a child needed a couple minutes outside the classroom with the effort of getting them right back in the classroom, that was something we attempted. We weren't as successful with it as I wanted because the counselors had already set up their routine. They had already been working on their things and really didn't want to give up the one-on-one sessions that they were giving. But when a student is dysregulated, hits the teacher, runs out of the classroom, can't learn, and then is sent to the office and sits for a half an hour and then goes back into the room, we're not fixing anything. We're not addressing anything. So I've tried to pull my counselors. I used one of my staff, office staff. Rebecca, many times, was a person. And we did a lot of triage throughout the year. And I feel like the last couple of years, it's been more intense than what I've experienced in years past, where the CPI training was critical, where the ability to de-escalate was critical, where the ability to know how to lock down, and I'll use the word, but I really mean it more loosely, how to secure parts of your building so that a student who is that upset doesn't impact everybody else's learning. That's real. And again, given where I'm at and for as long as I've been, I know it's real and more real in other schools, but it usually tends to be in the high-stress communities. Raising a child of color myself, in the last couple of years, the moment he walks out the door, I know there's a chance that he may be targeted and I might not see him come home. That's far more real now in the last few years than it was prior to that. So I think our schools and elementary kids don't have the ability to internalize it in the same way older kids do. So we see it in a dysregulated way more. So I agree that kids are the same, but I think the pressures they live under are far different than when your child was in kindergarten.
And I've been teaching third grade for 20 years, and I've been at Ocean View for eight. And what I've found is that kids who are dysregulated, if they don't have a special need, it's usually about connection and their frustration with the lack of connection. And in our community at Ocean View, with our high turnover, our 20 percent changeover during the year, our students are the students, are the children of students who are also changing and moving. And many of my kids, I had five new kids this year in my class, they were at other schools, their parents were now starting school, they moved to a new place, they have to leave their place because their teacher, their, sorry, their parent is not going to, can't afford to continue the next trimester or semester. And those stresses are external, but they've come in internally. And I don't know how I would do if I hadn't been teaching for 20 years, if I hadn't had mindfulness training, if I hadn't had school moves training, if I hadn't had, if we didn't have our second step curriculum, if I didn't have our social justice work, if I wasn't doing our leadership and our allied training, if I wasn't a conflict manager facilitator. And I'm listing every single thing we have available to us, because that's how important it is for me, 20 years, to have all those tools available for me to help my students, because they are stressed and their parents are stressed, and they are hungry when they come to school, which is why we have a breakfast program. We have a lot of needs outside of our school at Ocean View that come into our school. And it makes our situation different than the other schools. But I love, so we have to acknowledge that and work on that, but at the same time, be doing the same things, which is what we've really, what I really feel like we've been doing this year, being unified, looking towards the fact that they're all going to be at the middle school together. So it's, there is no good answer, but it's a tightrope. And in front of everybody, I want to the next trimester or semester. And those stresses are external, but they've come in internally. And I don't know how I would do if I hadn't been teaching for 20 years, if I hadn't had mindfulness training, if I hadn't had school moves training, if I hadn't had, if we didn't have our second step curriculum, if I didn't have our social justice work, if I wasn't doing our leadership and our allied training, if I wasn't a conflict manager facilitator. And I'm listing every single thing we have available to us, because that's how important it is for me, 20 years, to have all those tools available for me to help my students, because they are stressed and their parents are stressed. And they are hungry when they come to school, which is why we have a breakfast program. We have a lot of needs outside of our school at Ocean View that come into our school. And it makes our situation different than the other schools. But I love, so we have to acknowledge that and work on that, but at the same time, be doing the same things, which is what I really feel like we've been doing this year, being unified, looking towards the fact that they're all going to be at the middle school together. So it's, there is no good answer, but it's a tightrope. And in front of everybody, I want to compliment Teri. We have some very dysreguished, she's putting it as gently as possible, students who are very anxious, very angry. And you do a wonderful job with them. And it's exhausting. And every day's a new start. Look, I did good today. How's tomorrow going to be? But it is, it's a live moment. And those counselors are critical, and teacher training is critical, but so is teacher morale. Because every morning, how are they going to be today? And that is part of our struggle.
Any more short and simple questions, Charlie?
Some comments that follow straight on this. So found on the way to look for other things, Cal has had for a couple of years now, apparently, a basic needs committee. It was formed entirely because they were finding that the students they were enrolling were not getting enough to eat, finding a place to live, or stressed over where they were living. And maybe talking to them and saying, "Come to the village and talk with the school that's serving the kids that are your kids' kids." And, you know, when you all stay later tonight and hear about the dire shape of the budget, you'll say, geez, we can't do anything new. But having something in Albany like that, saying, and my general charge is to think about the things outside of your box that you would love to see fixed because they would make your job easier, even though it's not your job. So another thing to throw into the pile, and this is something that Anna Masker should be aware of too, is there's a Berkeley Baby Book program that's getting free books because Dolly Parton's foundation is giving free books to programs like that, who is getting books into the hands of one-year-olds and two-year-olds, or the families of, getting that out there before we ever touch them. So, you know, I'd love to know, in general, when you all talk about, well, we've got students who are challenging, is that because of politics? Is that because their parents are eating ramen and little else? Is that because they couldn't read to them? And with the resources at age two or three, long before we see them, that would be improved? Some things we may be able to take up, some things we may be able to jump on, like if Berkeley has a basic needs committee, introducing them to our particular aspects of that problem. Generally, just sort of looking outside the box, even if it's not something we can do. Every time I hear, you know, closing the achievement gap, we hear about closing the achievement gap in 10th grade, well, maybe the problem was at age three. And we can try to do more to help others help that problem get solved before we see them.
Okay, I'm going to move us along to the second question. We are doing great on time. Thank you, everybody. So the next question is following on and asking, how do we know if we were successful or not successful? So maybe highlighting some key metrics from your SIPSA or pointing to some anecdotal data that you'd like to share that lets you know and communicates the degree to which you feel like you were successful in implementing your plan? Who would like to begin? Melissa, thank you.
I thought we agreed I was going second. No, it's okay. Yeah, you know, I would love to start with talking about our ELD program and thinking about how we know whether or not we're successful. Our EL program at Marin has actually grown quite a bit, about 30 kids over the last two years, primarily beginners and early language acquisition students. And I'm so pleased to say that about 98% of those students have made one year's growth according to our school's SALT data. And I think that speaks to the hard work that Lauren Mischalk and her team have done with our students. That's one way that I know that we're successful. And I do have to say that I love seeing that kind of growth in our student population. I'm a strong believer in diversity of all kinds, and it's lovely to see our students become more diverse as a school population. The regular things that we look at, of course, are state testing and DBAs and that sort of data. And you guys, I know that you all have our test scores as part of our plans. But I think, when I also think of whether or not our school was successful, again, I think of our social emotional success as well. I think one thing that I want to highlight that's not in our plan, well, it is a little bit, I talked about having a conflict manager program, and I know it's been around for years, but I do have to say that in using the conflict manager program year after year after year, I consistently see gains in our students' ability to talk about conflict and their ability to acknowledge conflict and their ability to understand that conflict is a normal, real part of life, and there's nothing wrong with it. It's just how we handle it. We expanded our conflict manager program this year by, we have been training fourth and fifth graders, all of them, not just volunteers, who want to be trained, but we trained all fourth and fifth graders. And we expanded this year by having our conflict managers visit K3 classrooms to also then teach the smaller kids about what the process is and being out on the yard that way and seeing them, you know, I call it, you know, business and whether or not it's booming at recess every day. And seeing that their business is booming tells me that, yeah, conflict is alive and well, as we all know that it is. But our students feel comfortable getting help to solve those conflicts. And we have people who are, you know, trained in supporting them. So I think that that's one measure that's not always seen on a state test score for English Language Arts and Math, so.
Thank you. Well, you know, as I mentioned, I think a couple of the things that we're working on really dovetail. And as I think about my vision for work at Cornell, I love it when I see a little bit of chaos get kind of organized because things start to gel and work together. And as you were talking, Ross, about ways to support people, one of the things I think I would comment on is the work that we're doing now, I feel, in some of the social aspects of supporting the whole child and teaching teachers how to support kids, I think relates to climate and is free. And I love that part. It just requires a little bit of sweat equity and really putting your elbows and your heart and your mind into the work and being willing to consider your mental models and make a shift in the way you look at things. And being willing to ask yourself some tough questions about what are my biases, what are the things I'm probably blind to. And I actually think it's just hard work, but I don't think it costs us anything. And that's where I get super excited about it. When I think about what we've been successful with at Cornell, I think that in large part, the things we've been doing have cost us nothing. I have formed an intervention team of support staff that meets every other week. And we are religious about our meetings. In fact, people get upset if we have to move it. And we've set up a system where each one of those staff members, we rotate so that within every six-week period, they're talking about the kids that they're serving, and they're highlighting the kids that are being successful. They're sharing data on the kids that are at risk. We're all sitting there brainstorming about what to do about it. We're making plans, you know. And then by nature of doing that, we've been able to move kids in and out of groups flexibly, whereas in the past, they would just stay all year because there wasn't anybody attending to it. Or there was just an assumption that the kid needs reading lab, and so therefore, they're going to be in it all year. But we're not looking at it that way. And so that I'm super thrilled about. I'm also blessed that we have a strong team and a team that's interested in that work. I think the most difficult thing about forming the intervention team, and I love sharing this, was simply finding a time that we could all be together in the same room at the same time for 45 minutes every two weeks. That was the hardest part. Once we started meeting, that has just been beautiful. And we've done some good planning for next year. And that impacts, sort of how has it impacted academic intervention? Because that is sort of the tier-two piece of teachers helping kids outside of the room. But additionally, as I mentioned in last year, maybe the year before, we have a process called Safety Net where teachers meet with me and their team and support staff around the first report card period, and they highlight some of those kids. They select focal kids that are kind of the invisible kids that would fall through the cracks, not the kids that are already getting a number of services, but the kids that they're saying, "I'm worried about this kid and nothing's happening for him or her." And we sit as a team and design a plan about what will be done. And the beauty of that is, over time, we've evolved into, I always have this worry that when you start something like that, I'm going to walk out with a list of to-dos and nobody else's. And then nothing will happen. Because at an elementary site, to give all the to-dos to a principal means it will fail. Or we won't get any sleep, and eventually, it will fail. So you have to learn how to lift up people to do their good work and acknowledge that I'm not the one that should be doing the work. They're better at it than I am. And so when we leave those meetings and I have a list of to-dos, I look through at the things that everybody's going to do. And I think these are not rocket science. You know, these are things that people know. They just needed someone to get on the same page with them. And then I can go back and say, "How's it going?" Touch them with them in March. You know, I set up little ticklers to do things like that with the teachers. And many people are listed to do things that are not even sitting in the room, and then they get a follow-up email. And everybody's on board with that. So I would say, one of the highlights of success for Cornell this year is I feel like staff is the type of staff that with good work, they'll buy into stuff, and they're not afraid of doing heavy lifting. And then lastly, I think, you know, that sort of goes into the English Language Arts, or Language ELD program that we've been working on, because it just dovetails right in with it, in terms of one or two of the teachers sitting on that team are ELD teachers. But the huge success for us has been in training staff about what designated instruction looks like and why it's important that it be happening with every credentialed breathing person on staff. And that we got away from an idea where there was about three people serving. I mean, all the teachers are always doing it. Please, I want to make sure I acknowledge that. But we sort of tapped into this idea of, hey, we've got 26, 27 credentialed people on this staff. They all have the skills. If we train people and give them support, we'll be able to give more kids service all the time, which is what the law requires. But I don't want to go there with it. I just want to say, it's good teaching, and it's what we should be doing. And so, you know, we've been working on a program where I think we've been supporting teachers. And, you know, as it evolved throughout the year, it was simply a hope and expectation that teachers would do one strategy group in their class every week. And, you know, we're moving forward from there. And it started back at just teaching them about the ELD standards that we'd never had any formal training on. So, I mean, you have to kind of do some backwards planning. And then, just to acknowledge all the good work we've been doing in climate, I'm not going to touch on that too much because I want to pass it on. But it's significant, the work that we're doing and what we're talking about doing next year, I can't wait to talk about in the next question, right? So I'm going to pass it to...
I'll give you a chance. Rather, I think what I'd like to acknowledge is, rather than highlight some of the same things, I want to pick up on what's resonating for me in relationship to what's being said and what I've heard from my colleagues at Ocean View. And I think it really, how I know we're successful at Ocean View really has a lot to do with student and teacher morale. And I think this year, we've been building on for several years, the ability to have staff feel heard, appreciated, have their needs met, and opportunities for their own professional growth. The social justice math workshop that we went to, we started out the school year by meeting and talking about it first. And we had some teachers in the younger grades kind of question, how would that be used in their room? And they're really busy, and they're not really sure. And they were a little hesitant. So I asked them to come to the first two or three, and then if we needed to shift out, we would. And to a person, everybody at minimum appreciated that opportunity to be with other adults in other positions, in other places, doing similar work and having really thoughtful, well-organized conversations around it. So that leads to staff morale. Student morale, my background primarily before I went into administration was, I taught sociology and I taught PE. And in PE, for me, the whole idea was for a child to feel safe in their body and to have fun. So one of the things that I've often thought about at Ocean View is that our kids, intervention is great, counseling is fabulous, but if kids don't have some fun, then they don't really know why they're there. So we just had Eat on the Field Day recently. We had the Most Amazing Talent Show the other night. We have events throughout the year that give kids opportunities to have fun. And so I think that's one of the ways you can tell you're successful or not. Not written in the plan, but kind of resonated through the conversation.
Oh, I just wanted to add some of the other things in terms of knowing how successful we are, not to kind of highlight some of the work that the TSA team and Curriculum Council have really been doing to kind of formalize some things. You know, we have S-Back that everybody looks at. But, you know, it's a year, and it really, you know, doesn't show kind of the nitty-gritty of what's happening on the day-to-day basis and smaller increments. You know, it's, you know, because as we've said in many other ways, we can only deal with the kids where they are and move them to the next step. Whether they are starting way below or way above, it's our job to move them to the next steps. And so we've been talking a lot about how do we look at that? And one of the things that began with Curriculum Council and TSAs, and we've kind of now brought it to the whole staff, is developing a full articulated English Language Arts Assessment Plan for kindergarten through fifth grade that really will help us target individual skills that will help move students along. And in addition to putting this plan in, just picking assessments and planning for training to make sure everyone's using them in the same way, but also choosing these with an eye to, how are we going to talk about them as a staff, as teams, for what, once we see what the students are doing, what do we do with it? So it doesn't just go into a spreadsheet somewhere and the database and, you know, is lost there. But how do we translate it into practice? And how do we translate it into benefit for students? And so we're being very, very mindful as we choose assessments and think about the different formats that these are going to be used for discussion over the course of the year. We had, just a couple of weeks ago, we put together something that, to me, was, you know, maybe more exciting than for some other people, but coming, formalizing a district writing benchmark assessment. As we changed writing curriculum, that had kind of fallen by the wayside, certainly in the few years since I came here. And so everyone, K through five, gave an on-demand writing assessment, which is part of our writing curriculum. But we worked on really starting to formalize the ways we're going to talk about what we see in our students' work and calibrating against a rubric and just kind of changing this general practice. It's not, we each go to our own rooms and we score them as fast as we can, and we put them in Marie's spreadsheet, and then we all ignore it. Because it's yours now. You inherited it from Peter. But how do we change this into practice? What do we see here? And that shift in mindset is really exciting for me. And I know the other TSAs and I are, it's exciting. You know, we like to nerd out on this stuff and really get excited about what we're doing in a way to really celebrate, you know, day-to-day-to-day. Sometimes it feels like you're getting nowhere with students. And then all of a sudden, you look at it, and there's really so much to celebrate. And even when there's not quite as much to celebrate, like, oh, I know what I can do next. I know what my next step is. I can't worry about way down here, but I can do the next thing. And being really focused in how we look at it is really exciting. And we can make those changes. Just like, I think Heather was, I don't remember which one of you was saying, how the interventions are really fluid. You know, our intervention teachers are doing that. Our reading specialists and ELD teachers are working together as teams to have really short-term focused groups on skills that are assessment-based skills that we know that our kids need. We give them those. And many of the students, after the end of the period, are ready to kind of move out and take those next steps in a broader format. And so that focus on detailed assessment is really showing how successful we are. And in a way, that's much more immediate and actionable than waiting until the next year's S-Back scores. So, did you want to add something Rebecca?
Really quickly, just as, from a classroom teacher's perspective, all of the decisions that were made academically, Curriculum Council and TSAs have been really helpful, also for morale. Now that we know what we're going to do for reading and we're not wondering anymore and the materials are on their way and we know their trainings and we know what the workshops are going to be and we know what we're doing and we have our supplies and our materials are already here, so all of that stuff is a really great morale booster too. I wanted to comment too, as you were talking about looking at Reading Center and ELD and some of the new tools that are being used and shared amongst the schools. I was talking to the reading specialist yesterday and out of her group of nine students that she's been seeing all year long, seven of them are being released. That's never happened before, that's never happened, a couple, you hope for two, three. So I mean, it was that to me, that's what we're talking about right now. You know, the joke about, you know, you're the, you're a math club lifer, you know, that's that mentality, we're, we're, we're turning it around. It's, it's exciting for the kids, it's exciting for the teachers and sometimes when you're a reading specialist and you're doing the same thing at a pace that just doesn't seem like you're getting anywhere, you know, to know that it's working is, is really exciting. And also just because of the next question, going to set something up. My big passion this entire year has been around empowering students. I was very affected last year by a lot of the issues that came out, some of them just hadn't been on my radar. And I will admit that, it's been a lot of work that I've been trying to do with my staff and my family and myself. And so we wanted to give students really meaningful leadership positions and spent months figuring out, how many students can we involve in a meaningful way? What teachers will be in, in for the long run? What are our goals going to be? And Terry was gracious enough to give us a planning day and calendars and we, I received grants from A, two grants from AEF and PTA money to support our kids and have them set up a student council that made decisions, saw outcomes, student council reps that were reporting to classrooms on a monthly basis, giving us information back on a monthly basis. We have, they did meaningful work. They were conflict managers, they were solving conflicts. If they were community coaches, they were rewarding tickets and supporting kids with toolbox tools. If they were in student council, they were working on lunchroom issues and they were running sing-alongs and coming to practices and they were standing up in assemblies and sharing how to be an ally or sharing how to speak to each other kindly. So that, to me, was the most empowering thing for myself and I feel also that the level of student engagement, we saw our conflict manager reports go way down to almost nothing. In fact, this morning I told the kids, "You're done, we're done with conflict manager, you don't have duty again, though you, you'll have to be at the assembly tomorrow and you have to sing and you have to do this and you have to do that." But one of them said, "But I never solved the conflict the whole time!" And I, I said, "You were doing your job, you were representing." But I love that and I'm really proud of that too.
Okay, this is great, I'm loving all this, the dedication that I'm hearing and the excitement. And I need to make a slight left turn here, we'll get back on track in a minute. Board members all submit questions to the superintendent before a meeting. And the first five questions were on the SEPSs and the answer to every one of them was, site principals can respond to this question directly during the work-study session. None of these questions have come up, nor are they going to. So I'm going to suggest that these questions be submitted to the principals and be answered in writing to the board over the next week so that we can get the answers without derailing the rest of this discussion. Is that okay?
Yeah, if I can make a suggestion, we have, excuse me. I know they don't care. But if I can make a suggestion, I think, do we have a principals' meeting coming up Friday or did we just do it? Yeah, we have regular principals' meetings, so if we could get them sooner rather than later, we can probably plan a coordinated time to sit and do some of that work thoughtfully for you.
You can get them tonight.
Okay, I need to speak because a lot of those questions were mine, but I think that I communicated poorly to you and Val because it was, they, they did have question marks on them, but it was really more of a thought paragraph for me and a reflection. It really isn't something that I need to have answered in the last week, especially given the fact that we're right here at the end of school. I'd like to think about, think about it more, what I'd like to know from the principals before we task them with something. Okay.
So the, the final question, and as Heather said, this is sort of the most exciting one, is thinking about how everything that we've talked about thus far will influence the plans for next year. And I for one, I'm really excited about beginning the 2018-19 school year in partnership and collaboration with principals, TSAs and sites. Before we go there, are there any other questions around number two or can we go right to Forward Thinking? Yes?
I would like to know and if there was an idea that was born at one site that then spread to the, the other schools. Didn't have to get born this year, maybe got born in a previous year, but then, you know, and if it's spread. So if you guys have any examples of that, that you could just, you know, give me a quickie on because I'm curious about that.
Rebecca, whichever closest. I can think of two. One is what Heather mentioned about strategy groups where, and what that means is, in particular, you know, in a subject area, you give your whole class lesson and then you send them off to work independently and then you pull another group of students who have a similar need. They may be at different levels, they may be at a similar level, but it's a smaller targeted group, again, using kind of the how do we know based on our assessment data, what our students need, kind of pulling a group and giving more targeted instruction. It might be simply reteaching, more likely it's giving them something different that will enable them to access that whole group lesson. And I think Cornell really started that work. And then in our TSA conversations, I picked up, I'm like, "Oh, that's really cool." And so really kind of started to focus on that at Ocean View as well. And the situation at Rune is a little bit different just because of time and availability and how much Naomi can pack in, but I think we'll see even more of that over the course of the next year. And another example I can think of is doing some whole group work around using protocols to look at student writing. And I'm using writing as examples because that has been kind of my main focus over the last two years, it's going to be expanding into reading as well. But one thing we had, or I had the idea of, is to really look at writing whole staff and using a protocol to analyze work. And we started that in our ILT last year and then broadened it to whole staff and I think other staffs have done it as well to do some of that. So, those are my two examples.
Just historically, I'll just say the conflict manager program, I think, started years ago at either, I want to say Cornell. And then Marla gave us some money to be able to do some staff training and consequently all three schools have various forms of conflict managers, that's one.
And it's, along those notes, as we were trying to design leadership and we wanted to expand roles and positions so that students who are moving through third, fourth and fifth grade had different roles, that grew. We, our, our best team met with Alexis when she was still principal over at Marin because they had launched their community coaches program and they were trying it out. And she was gracious enough to have a meeting with us and share out what they'd been doing and their skits and their, and their, everything, their whistles, whatever they were using, which we were able to implement. About a month ago, I met with one of the teachers from Cornell, she wanted some information about our, how we were structuring our student council and our reps and what kinds of work we were doing with that. So that was a fun meeting to have. Marin teacher Charles was starting a chess club program, so I've been running chess club for a long time, so he and I met at the beginning of this year and apparently that's still going great and he's sharing things with me. And because of Google Docs and the fact that we can share things amongst the district, our third grade team is sharing slideshows about alonies, about S-Back, our, I think, you know, I have, from, I have materials from all the schools and all the teachers there. So that part about being bold and sharing, I just, that's been a really big piece that had been missing for me coming here. I came from a very collaborative district and when I was first here, my first five years, I didn't feel that way. I was doing it by myself and I don't feel that way anymore. We are just, not only are we more comfortable, we, we feel prouder, I guess, think about what we have because we've really been thinking about it, but we also have ways to share it and we're not being, I think, embarrassed that our work isn't shareable. So I, I think there's just a lot of collaboration going on. And of course, we're all doing the no place for hate and we get our banner tomorrow and you guys are already gone. Yep.
Yeah, I feel the same way about conflict managers in that it did, I think, originate perhaps at Cornell, but we really were feeling like it was kind of getting stale and not really supporting kids to get broad leadership. And we, I met with Alexia a couple of years ago to talk about some of the stuff she was doing and then she met with our ILT. And I just want to give kudos to the Cornell teachers that helped me coordinate it because we had to revamp everything this year and we did. And it was a great success and any kid that wants to do it, does it. I mean, what a wonderful idea, right? No more, I mean, there are a few things that we ask of them in terms of their positive character, but outside of that, if you want to do it, we're going to find a way for you to do it. And I love that. I also want to just highlight the fact that, again, coming from some of my experience, I've never, ever worked on a principal team that is as collaborative as ours. And it's not because of who we are necessarily, although I'd love to say we're just great people. But, you know, I mean, our, this team has evolved over time and it's changing and we meet regularly and we push each other, we're good thought partners, we, we don't always agree, we often do agree. And we color the work that we do in terms of allowing each site to have some variance in, in what they do to meet their needs, but we push each other a little bit on when things need to be continuous and consistent and it works. And we're also friendly, you know, we enjoy each other's company, but I think we just really are a great team. So I don't know where that comes from, it's certainly not me, I think it's just because we do it, you know, and we care. So I like that and I think it helps because in a small district like this, you have to have teamwork. And then lastly, you know, again, it's a little bit hard to figure out where something originates because I think everything stems off of everything. But the ELD work that we've been doing at Cornell, I don't know if it originated there, but it certainly did grow and we've been able to do a little training for all the teachers. And I think that has in some part to do with what we started there, but in better part to do with the TSAs linking up with the ELD team and the fact that they collaborate and they have meetings and, and what happens in Albany, which can be, you know, there's an upside and a downside to it, is people talk and say, "Well, you did what and you got what and what's going on?" And it helps spread the word and get things moving, you know? So I'm really, really proud of that because the ELD team, it used to be like ELD was this thing happening over there, but it's not. It's, it's actually happening all the time and it's linked with what the TSAs are doing in terms of academic work across, certainly, language arts, but any place where language applies. So I'm liking the way that teaming is going.
Okay, so on to our final question unless there are other questions. Giving each site an opportunity to talk about the plans for next year and we have about 25 minutes, who'd like to begin? Terry, Paul Black said Terry.
I think that the thing that sits over us at Ocean View more than anything is a plan for our new school and the temporary location. So much of the conversations we have next year will include, what will this look like moving into a temporary housing? And I'm beginning to prepare for some of that. So much of it is kind of holding two things. In one hand, holding consistency and making staff feel as if they're supported and along with that, trying to make some assumptions or some plans for what will that look like in temporary housing? So that, to me, that's got to be reflected in our plan somewhere, that next time we take a look at it is we'll be in temporary housing for a couple of years.
Or pass it, okay. I'll talk, okay. I do. One of the things that I'm really excited about for next year is really building on a lot of this collaboration and teacher training that we have going on. We're, we're already working on planning next year's series, we have a new reading implementation coming. And one of the things that we've been hearing from teachers at Curriculum Council at cross-site is wanting not just training, but time for planning and collaboration. And so we've put a plan where we don't just have our content expert come in to do a half-day lab site where we observe her teach, we kind of, you know, soak up as much wisdom from her as we can, which is wonderful. But this year, we're adding in a second component, which is teachers getting release time to work in their grade levels to really collaborate around planning for these units. And not just lesson planning, but, you know, kind of in a day-to-day, but thinking bigger picture about what students need and what structures we can put in place to really support them throughout. And so that's one of the things that I'm most excited about.
Well, I talked about intervention and I talked about ELD and I, can I just say that work is going to continue and I think that because of the momentum that we've built, it's just getting deeper and broader as we go. Because I don't, I don't want to consume too much time with that, but I want to have questions if there are some. In terms of, a thing I'm really looking forward to is the units of study reading next year. I, I was a workshop teacher 25 years ago and much of it has not changed and seeing, remember what I commented on at the beginning about nothing changing? It's so interesting to me because I'm such an advocate of that type of learning for work, for language arts, that seeing the two curriculas connect is really going to move things forward, at least in my mind. And I would say, whereas before I said everything that we want to work on hard next year doesn't cost anything, this does require some bucks because teachers need to really deepen their classroom libraries and we need to build our leveled libraries and our, everything around books, I guess, is what I would say. And then, really important plan for us at Cornell next year, I think, is something I'm proud of, which is how are we going to tackle and really take on and own some of the work around social justice and social emotional learning and make it tangible and real for folks? And one thing I'm happy about is I've already got five people signed on to be part of a committee with me next year so that we can make it a focus area and plan for in what venues and in what ways will we communicate with the population of parents and in what ways will we help staff to keep moving forward? We already picked a summer reading book for the group and this is really a tribute again to the, to the staff and how strong they are. And I think that kind of couples with a couple of ideas for me. One is around the notion of what culturally responsive teaching looks like and the other is around supporting the whole child in terms of things like their social emotional well-being. Terry and, I don't, please excuse me, but did you go Melissa too, to the trauma-informed, trauma-based informed instruction? I can't remember exactly what the thing was called, but it was amazing. I, I sat there thinking, you know, what I'm envisioning for me in terms of next steps for Cornell is, is moving beyond a kindness campaign and turning it into a connection campaign. Because so much of what impacts people's ability to do well in their environment is how connected they feel to the people that are around them and the material that they're being asked to interact with, which really dovetails perfectly with culturally responsive teaching. And so I left that day with a list of to-do items in terms of, you know, what I can do to actually make it happen. And I think I have an obligation to provide staff with resources, motivation, be really crystal clear in what I say to people about what we value and what we have unity around as a staff in terms of my meetings with people. And then also really doing some deep work around impacting mindset. Mindset that might already be there but just wants to learn more or mindset that would benefit from an insight and a shift among our staff and our community because I think that has Because I think that has everything to do with the work. And I'm super excited about it. Did everybody? Did we go this way?
All right. Next year, I just have to say that I'm really feeling the enthusiasm of this group and definitely sharing it, you know, as a first-year principal, you know, I'm realizing so, is it, well, first-year for principal, yeah, second-year administrator. Yeah, right on, thanks. But the, being back at the elementary school level and being able to plan for the next school year this early out really does get you pumped. And yeah, the school's ending in three days and we should be exhausted, right? Like, and on some level are, absolutely for sure. But, but looking ahead to the kinds of things that we're thinking about for next year and again, speaking to the collaboration that's, that's there for our teachers, but on our admin team, I know I definitely appreciate, I appreciate it. I have benefited greatly from being able to reach out, meet regularly and connect, ask questions, all of these things. And many of our conversations are geared toward what direction are we going? What's important to take with us? What can we leave because it's not working? And I have been really charged by those conversations. I think a couple of ways in which Marin is going to be moving forward next year is in continuing to build this district-wide team. I think that, you know, the events of last year impacted all of us in many different levels. And I think that one thing that has come from that is an awareness of a need to move forward together and an awareness of a need to make sure all children in Albany are supported and that all children have, we have connections and commonalities. And that doesn't mean we have to be the same because we could not be more different individually as schools and as people, but recognizing that we don't do this alone. And to me, that's really, that motivates me on a very deep level to do this kind of work with colleagues who care about the bigger picture and about students moving forward. I think everybody said a lot of what, what, you know, we're looking at it, Marin, in terms of the reading adoption and social emotional and social justice work and intervention. One thing that I did want to mention as well is, is getting our community on board, not that they're not on board, but getting them involved and having ways to work with our families to support the learning that's happening at our schools and conversations that are happening at home. I think that the, the district-wide parent education nights that happened this year with the A D L one night and with Rudy Mendoza Denton, three nights, and it was, you know, but, but y'all were willing to play and that's awesome. You know, it's one thing to have an idea and it's one thing to have resources to do something, but it's another thing to get people who are willing and able to be involved to problem-solve how to make it work for everyone. And that certainly was a team effort. So getting, you know, getting more parent ed and across the district to lean in to really hard conversations about race and how to talk about difference and what that means to individual families and how it's different for families of color than it is for other families, I think is important to recognize. And I look forward to continuing that work, not just at Marin, but with, you know, with all three sites. Because I think it's really important and it's one way that we can move all of our families forward, so.
Not so much a question, more of a request for thought. We started this section with Teri talking about the work that you want to do over the next year in terms of planning for the temporary housing. I wanted to share that not too long ago, I got an email from a parent saying, "How can you destroy our community this way?" And I, I thought about it and I thought, wow, you know, well, for one thing, the temporary housing plan has been the nest since then, but I thought, well, you know, I'm not trying to destroy your community. As a matter of fact, I feel that the overarching truth is that we are one community. And that even when we have Ocean View kids at A M S and Ocean View kids at the high school, that they are still a part of our community. And the teachers are not just the, you know, part of the site community, but they're also part of the broader community. You're all colleagues across your, your grade levels and, and colleagues as teachers in a broader sense as well. So I think that this deserves a lot of thought, not just from the people here at, at this table, but, but beyond that. And I want just to ask you to, to think deeply about how we can maintain a sense of community in, in these disparate locations and how we can address that need for connection that Melissa just mentioned. Because Ocean View is first, but then eventually there'll, there'll be Marin and Marin kids will be over it, you know, at Ocean View. And, and so we need to spend some time thinking about how we name community and, and how we create connection in a, in a fluid way. So let's all come back next year and, and have some, some good ideas.
So I'm not sure how these thoughts all connect to each other, but they're all kind of riffing off the question about the transition and, and the sites. And first, I just wanted to say thank you to the district leadership team for really working out a transition plan, which I think is a good plan. It really is a good plan. I, I think there's just a lot to be said for it, despite the one negative letter. And people will have different, different opinions, there's no doubt about that. So as I said, these are all a little bit disconnected here, but I think they all relate to the transition. I'm remembering 1999 when Albany Middle School opened in its present location. And the difference between that school on the day when construction turned it over to staff and what it looked like at back-to-school night, when, when all the teachers had turned those spaces into their own spaces and really took ownership of those spaces and made Albany Middle School look and feel like Albany Middle School. I mean, it wasn't the building, it was what teachers were able to do with the building. So that's kind of one thought there. I'm sure it'll happen again. The other is there's a certain symmetry. You know, the Cornell school that I knew in the 1990s was one of two K-5 schools. We had Cornell and Marin and we had two K-2 schools, McGregor and Vista. And so now we are moving back to the old McGregor site with Ocean View. Ocean View was created by combining McGregor and Vista and allowing it to expand to become a K-5 school. And so there's a certain symmetry that, that we're, we're going back to that site, which was a K-2 school. So we're going back to its roots. And, you know, who knows? Maybe there's some way to help people kind of feel connected to the space by recognizing and acknowledging that, that history. So my third really disconnected thought here is that we've talked a lot about flexible learning spaces. And yesterday I had the opportunity to attend an event in San Francisco as part of Design Week. It was called Are Our Classrooms Making the Grade? And they talked about these flexible learning spaces. And I kind of had a, sort of a puzzlement that came out of that because you would see these big, beautiful classroom spaces. They're pretty empty, you know? That was the idea, they're flexible, you can do what you want with them. But that doesn't really look like what, you know, an elementary classroom looks like. An elementary classroom, most teachers have the materials that they want and use and they need, accessible to them and right around them. That's, that's what I saw when Albany Middle School opened, was taking ownership by decorating your own room. It's not more than decoration, it's really creating the materials you need to be successful with the kids you're, you're working with. So I'm still puzzling over this kind of, sort of disconnect that I feel between the sort of contemporary design philosophy of, around flexible learning spaces. What I see, see us actually doing with the spaces, the image that came to my mind was going to the exploratorium. It's not a flexible learning space, it's got stuff all over it, you know? What's flexible is the kids get to go and run around and connect to whatever they feel like and that's, that's kind of an elementary classroom. So I'm not sure how we're going to proceed with that, but what, what we're going to have going into these classrooms is going to be this kind of space that it's not giving you a lot of clues about what to do with the space. You know, so, well, I guess it's a great opportunity to have a blank slate, but it's, you know, I think it's going to be a lift in terms of making those classrooms work for Ocean View. Like I said, those were a lot of disconnected thoughts, but I think it's important to anticipate this change.
Okay, so this has been really exciting and invigorating and now I'm going to put a terrible wet blanket over everything. Later this evening, we're going to get a budget report. And the budget report is awful. We are running something a little short of a $5 million structural deficit. Hopefully, we will pass a parcel tax, which will close some of that. But I don't know that we can close all of it with more income and that'll mean cuts. And 80% of our budget is personnel. So what we don't want to do is affect student outcomes. Our first priority is always the kids. So it's up to you, and I'm not going to ask you to give the answers right now, but it's up to you to think about what programs will most support the kids and therefore need to be preserved. In these instances, in what you guys have been talking about tonight, I've heard a lot about intervention, I've heard a lot about TSAs, I've heard a lot about professional development. My personal belief is those things are all very important for student outcomes and they also cost money. So I'm sorry to put such a downer on this, but, you know, it's a reality that we really are going to have to deal with. So it's going to take some, some real thought and, and there's going to be some pain. But hopefully, the pain will not affect how the kids learn. And that's, you know, you guys are the educational experts. We're responsible to the public to balance the budget. That's our job. We don't want to do anything that's going to hurt your kids, our kids. And that's where we're going to turn to you for help.
I'm going to stay on the wet blanket with you. I don't believe there's, I don't, I don't think we're talking the truth if we're going to say we have that level of a deficit and say there is no student impact. Students will feel the impact. Our job is to figure out how to support them through that impact. When they see their teacher laid off, when they see their class sizes increased, when they see the counselors disappear, if those are the sorts of, if they see music disappear, they're impacted. We can't avoid impacting students and when we lose that kind of money. But if we recognize that they're going to be impacted and we begin to kind of feel out how we can support them through it, then maybe we can cushion the blow. But I don't believe we can prevent them from being impacted.
I don't have anything to say to that. I would love to talk about it when we get there.
So I guess I'm going to stay on the wet blanket with you all too, but maybe get us a little, maybe one foot off of it. I agree that I, there will be an impact. But I think what we may want to think about is, how do we make decisions that have the least amount of impact? Instead of making decisions that are critically going to, going to hurt kids. And I, and I know we've heard several examples of, do you cut or do you increase class size? Everything has a burden, but I think we're going to have to go through a prioritization process that looks at what kind of cuts can we make that have the least impact on kids? And I think we need to look at revenue generating sources besides parcel tax.
So I'm going to speak as the teacher and this has nothing to do with your blanket. I'm, I am moving to the annex after next year with my colleagues. My school's being divided into thirds, my kinders are going to other schools, my fourth and fifth grade friends are going to be at a different site, even though it's close by. I am on the building team and we've had a million meetings and we're going to have another one on Monday and I'm excited about that, don't get me wrong. I want the school we come out with to be fantastic. But I'm also, look, I'm also all about the whole student. And I want to ask that, oh, I was just going to talk about her too. I want to ask that we have a committee that has members from all sites. Because our kinders are going to be at these two schools and the middle school teachers and, and we're involving all schools in how this goes. And it's the blueprint for Marin, so there's a lot of stakeholders here. There's a lot to figure out. We need to be able to have access maybe to the little theater so that our school can get together in first through to fifth and have some assemblies. We need a library. How are we getting a library? Linda says we're not going to the middle school because the books aren't appropriate. There's, I, I want the committee to start meeting in August. I will be on it. We have so much to figure out, but Ocean View School can't figure it out by themselves. I haven't even been shown the site. I don't know what the annex looks like, but it's 12 classrooms. Well, we have 12 classes of kids going there. Where's reading lab going to be? Where's, you know, where's speech going to be? I understand that half of us are going to be, our, our support are going to be in Berkeley. So this all gives me incredible anxiety. So when we're leaving this table and we're looking about next year, I'm scared about this. And I love school and I love teaching and I'll do everything I can to write a site plan that shows us the best year we can possibly have, in two years. But we have to put the right foot forward and everybody has to be involved. Everybody has to make accommodations, everyone needs to be working on our kids, our community kids, having a successful four years. Our middle school kids, putting up with little kids being around, little, little kids. Our high school, having school, passing classes with fourth and fifth graders. Where are, where's our playground going to be? How is this going to work? So I want this committee started ASAP, I want to be on it, but everybody's got to be on it, including some of you guys. And to me, this is my biggest thing right now. Bigger than the reading program, I need my books. I'm going to throw that out there. So my anxiety level is really high.
I hadn't noticed. So I think I just wanted to add, you've put your finger on it. It takes people working together and doing it together. That's what gets you through these transitions. And there are some of us who have actually been through a couple of these, the budget crisis of 2001. It was not fun. There was a lot of pain. In the end, the district grew. And we've been through site closures and reopenings, openings, I mean, new middle school, new high school, the creation of Ocean View. And I do remember how some of that was done and absolutely, it was about people getting together. When Ocean View was first created, I can remember a large group of people gathering what, I, I think it was the Ocean View Library, which was then the middle school library. It included people from all the elementary sites, you know? And it was at that meeting that the decision was made to, let's just start Ocean View with grades K-3, so nobody has to leave Cornell or Marin and then let Ocean View grow into grades four and five. And it was a very collaborative decision that was made by a large group of people. I know we can get through these things, but it takes people working together to do it. Just in terms of the site at Albany Middle, there's, besides the 12 classrooms, there will be the drama room and the computer science room and a staff area. So there's going to be a little extra space beyond those 12 classrooms there. The same is going to go for the high school annex or the building when it's created because there will be, where are we at now? Five standard classrooms plus the, the maker space, a big, big space that will become fabrication, for fabrication and an adjoining space that will become like a computer room. But those are going to be big spaces that can be support spaces of some kind. So I think there's opportunity here. So I think there's opportunity here.
Whoever mentioned the needing to get books reminded me that, three times a year, the library has book sales. I go as a little free library manager and we, little free library people and teachers get free run of the books after they close the sale to take anything they like for free. It's usually not, you know, K-5 books, but there are those there and I grab them for the little free library. And I'm wondering if we ought to be talking to the Albany library as a resource. It is an after-school place. It is a library. We could shift resources there and say, here is our lending library for Albany K-5. As an adjunct to what the library does, they also give out Wi-Fi hotspots, they also have checkoutable laptops. There are a lot of resources at the library, and I think looking to do more collaboration district and library and city may be a part of this too. I'd love to see the maker space open as soon as the building is done and collaborate with the city and the library on that. And broaden all of our resources. So let's look at all the other organizations that might chip in. We might even be able to get community support. Somebody says, look, I've got a building that's going to be vacant for a year. We can put stuff there. We can use this as a meeting space, et cetera. I hope we keep the drama space at the annex open because there'll be a lot of needs for those sorts of spaces, including, because it'll be, I think, nicer for smaller than the little theater is now.
So we have another meeting to move on to. So we're going to adjourn this meeting and back up to the, I guess where we'll start the next one. Thank you, everybody, for coming and for your great input.